I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Let's see, Mr. London, will you please read us out of closed?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Rona County School Board come out of closed session for the following. To discuss the investigation of a student matter pursuant to the Scholastic Record Exemption at 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. And to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.03, action from closed?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that student 2025-2026-07 be held in abeyance and the student be placed in an alternative education program under the conditions of a contract as developed by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes, ma'am.
And, Madam Chair, I move that student 2025-2026-08 be held in abeyance and the student be placed in an alternative education program under the conditions of a contract as developed by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, everyone. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.01, announcement of changes in the agenda. We do not have any. Item 4.02, approval of agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes, ma'am. Item 5.01, recognition of Williamburg Middle School Terrier Safety Squad as the 2025 Youth of Virginia Speak Out Club of the Year, Ms. Katie Hutchison and Ms. Leslie Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, and Dr. Nicely. Thank you for having us this evening. Tonight, I am proud to recognize the Williamburg Middle School Terrier Safety Squad for being named the 2025 YOVOSO Club of the Year. Sponsored by Mrs. Leslie Jordan and Deputy Mullins, this exceptional group of student leaders has set the standard for excellence in youth traffic safety education. Under their guidance, the Terrier Safety Squad has developed innovative, peer-led programs that engage the entire student body and community in promoting safe choices as drivers, passengers, and pedestrians. Their work includes school-wide campaigns supporting seatbelt use, pedestrian awareness, and distracted driving prevention, delivered through creative activities, outreach events, and partnerships with local law enforcement. YOVOSO recognized the Terrier Safety Squad for its strong student leadership, community outreach, and effective programming. Here to tell you a little bit more about the Terrier Safety Squad this evening are Mariah Hubank, and then representing Sincere Man who could not be here is Deputy Mullins, and representing Lake and Wendell who could not be here is Ms. Jordan.
The Terrier Safety Squad is important to me because we help promote traffic safety. I really enjoyed helping with the mock crash last year.
Again, I'm reading on behalf of Lake and Wendell. She says, "The thing I love most about the Terrier Safety Squad is we promote safety and raise awareness about safety on the road. One of my favorite events we did in the past is for sure the Fall Festival. It was so fun because it was open to the community, and I think that's the event that we raised the most awareness at."
Good evening. I'm representing Sincere Man. He really enjoys being on the Terrier Safety Squad because it helps bring awareness to driver's safety and seatbelt safety. Some of his favorite activities were going to W E Cuniff for the Halloween Safety Presentation and downtown Benton Truck or Treat.
We also have Mariah Hubank, who is representing the club today. All in black, sorry. Both Marias are here today.
Congratulations.
Can I look up that way? Moms and dads, go for it. Don't go anywhere. You got one last one here. Go once, go twice.
Item 5.02, recognition of Deputy Mullins as the 2025 Youth of Virginia Speak Out SRO of the Year, Ms. Katie Hutchison.
I'm also pleased to recognize Deputy Mullins this evening, who was honored as the 2025 YOVOSO School Resource Officer of the Year for his continuous support and mentorship. Together with Mrs. Jordan, Deputy Mullins has successfully built lasting relationships with our students and their families and continues to be an invaluable member of Terrier Nation. We are so proud of the Terrier Safety Squad's hard work and dedication to making a positive impact on the school and community, truly representing the spirit of WBMS by being terrier-strong and future-ready.
Hot rod. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Nicely, and Sheriff Orange, I appreciate the opportunity again. It's a very humbling award. But again, it's a student-led club. While I do appreciate the award, I believe it's a club award as well. The students put in a lot of time and effort to do these events, and it's really showing. Our club has grown to 25 kids, which is the max number that we could have. However, I want to recognize Ms. Leslie Jordan with her strong mentorship. Without her, none of this could be possible. She puts in countless hours, her tireless dedication, and genuine care for our students is that steady hand that steers them in the prevention club year after year. Like I said, without her, it wouldn't be the same. What makes us proud is that this work isn't about recognition, but it's about the impact. Our students are stepping out of their comfort zones, pleasuring to make safer decisions, and standing up for one another. They're proving that when you create the right culture, students do not just join the club, but they become the driving force that inspires change within Terrier Nation and throughout our community. Again, with this strong club of empowerment, safety, and hope, we give the community and all the kids on Whinburg Campus. Thanks for believing in them. Thanks for believing in us. And again, Terrier Nation, terrier-strong. Thank you.
Let me say what makes us proud is you, and we appreciate you. We appreciate you and everything you do for our schools. And we thank, come on up Sheriff Orange, and we thank you Sheriff Orange because, as you recall a couple of years ago, we had to go to bat to see if we could keep you because we were switching over to the Police Department handling our SROs. And I thought maybe there was going to be a mob if we didn't get this. So, thank you Sheriff Orange, and we're getting in the middle here.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. All right, very good.
Thank you. Item 5.03, recognition of the Glenver High School Boys Soccer VHSL Class II, three-time state championship team, Ms. Cory Franklin and Mr. Josh Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, Dr. Nicely. I can't even express how proud we are of these young men, this program. They left it all on the field this summer and won their third consecutive state championship. And the amount of time and hours that they put into achieving this is absolutely incredible. I'm going to turn the floor over to their head coach and Coach of the Year, Mr. Josh Jones.
First, I'd like to thank the school board for hosting us this evening. We are obviously missing several members from our 2025 team.
That was a really good team.
As we graduated 13 seniors, as well as we currently have many in football and basketball practices. I'd also like to thank our tremendous administration at Glenver High School as they constantly support and provide opportunities for our academic and athletic programs to be successful. They are a huge reason why our school alone has won 48-team state championships. I also want to thank our coaching staff, Andy Clapper, Logan Boyd, Bob Van Gerven, Rich Drew, and Chandler Supfen for all they do to pour into these students and into our soccer program. And of course, a huge congratulations to our student athletes for achieving an unbelievable third straight state title this past year. Many of these players have contributed to our success over the last five years where they have compiled an overall record of 98 wins, three losses, and two ties, and outscored our opponents 531 to 56, won five consecutive Three Rivers District Championships, five consecutive Region C Championships, and are currently on a 61-game unbeaten streak. This year, under the leadership of our captains Jake Williams, Aiden Hilton, and Kian Fisher, we were able to compile a 23-0 and 0 overall record while outscoring our opponents 134 to 3. The defensive group led by goalkeeper Grayson Shepard and defender Jake Williams recorded a staggering 20 shutouts as our squad only trailed for four minutes the entire season. State Player of the Year Kian Fisher led us offensively with 25 goals and 12 assists. We were able to defeat Clark County 3 to 1 in the state semifinals and Bruton High School 2 to 0 in the state final on June 14th. Aiden Hilton and Adam Saunders netted the goals in the second half to claim the victory and cap off the three-peat and the unbelievable season. I'm also very proud of how our guys play the game, recording an unbelievable only four yellow cards throughout their 23 games this past season. This shows our guys' discipline and mental fortitude, which gives us an advantage on the field. It's been rewarding to see the culture in our soccer program evolve over the past several years. These players were able to achieve great things this year due to their competitiveness, their passion for the game, their unselfishness, and their physical and mental toughness. These attributes will lead these individuals as they take their next steps in life. It has also helped establish standards for future student athletes in our program at Glenver High School. Our motto, "Best is the standard," has set the tone in our program as our goal is always to perform our absolute best in whatever we do. We are never playing a scoreboard or an opponent as we are always in competition with ourselves to give our best each and every day. This trait will pay off in life as we encourage our student athletes to constantly give their best in everything that they do. Thank you for your time and the recognition of our school, our community, our team, and these awesome student athletes. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Murray, come on up. You're an athletic director at the top.
Don't go anywhere.
Coach Jones, what's the next sport? I know you coach more, so.
I actually left middle school basketball practice early.
I see Coach Jones up at Glenver. Anytime I go to Glenver, Coach Jones is there doing something. So, thank you for everything that you do. It's a statement. Wonderful community, wonderful kids, and the coaching staff. I mean, you just don't win three state championships by chance. So, great job. Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Item 5.04, recognition of Tina Coffey as the Virginia Technology and Engineering Education Association Elementary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kim Bradshaw.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Nicely, Dr. Saltis. I would like to bring another elementary winner to you all this evening. At the annual VTEA Conference in July, Tina was named the Virginia Teacher of the Year for the elementary level. Tina is the ITRT for Hermannell Horn, Oak Grove, and Fort Lewis Elementary Schools. She's an exceptional educator who's whose dedication has profoundly impacted students, fellow educators, and the broader educational community. She works with the staff and administration at each school to make programming accessible and exciting for learners of all backgrounds and abilities. In March, she will represent the Commonwealth of Virginia as the Teacher of the Year at the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association Conference in Virginia Beach. Tina Coffey. So first off, thank you for this recognition. I'm very grateful to work in a division that truly values innovation and technology. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible people I get to work with every day. My principals, Julie Sansamire, Jennifer Gravely, and Kim Smith bring unwavering support and trust, and they consistently champion meaningful student-centered technology integration. I'm so lucky to work alongside them and all the fabulous teachers at my three schools. Kim Bradshaw, our Director of Elementary Education, provides clear guidance and creates conditions that allow this work to flourish across our schools. And I also want to recognize Jeff Terry in the back and our Technology Department. They are the unsung heroes behind the scenes. Their work keeps classrooms running smoothly and ensures that teachers and students have what they need to succeed. They also work hard to provide innovative programs and to keep our network safe. And of course, the ITRT team deserves a special shout-out. So my team, they inspire me, challenge me, and remind me daily what collaboration and passion for teaching can accomplish. I'm proud to learn and grow alongside such a dedicated group. Thank you again for this honor and for your commitment to our schools.
Item 5.05, recognition of Ms. Tessa Ergo, preschool teacher at Penn Forest Elementary, for accomplishments in the Virginia Quality Birth to Five Evaluation System, Ms. Beth Harmon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we're proud to recognize Ms. Tessa Ergo, preschool teacher at Penn Forest Elementary School for her outstanding work in early childhood education. Under her leadership and commitment, Penn Forest Preschool has achieved the highest rating of exceeds expectation in the Virginia Quality Birth to Five Evaluation System, earning placement in the Excellence Honor Roll. According to the Virginia Department of Education, this distinction is reserved for early childhood sites that demonstrate exemplary teacher learning, teaching and learning interactions, high-quality curriculum implementation, and continuous improvement. We would also like to note that Penn Forest Elementary is only one of 39 public preschools across Virginia to earn this distinction this year, a clear indicator of Ms. Ergo's dedication to our youngest learners and her success in fostering the kind of early experiences that set our children on a path to lifelong learning and becoming opportunity-ready. Ms. Ergo, thank you for your dedication and service, your innovation in the classroom, and your unwavering belief in children's potential. We applaud you and celebrate your milestone. And she has a team of people here to recognize her, so.
Item 5.06, School Spotlight, Northside High School, Ms. Jill Green.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Nicely and Dr. Saltis. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight to showcase and brag a little bit about Northside High School. And I tried to put some things together that you may not know about us. So, there's some data, but I know that Mr. Williams and Mr. Riley will give you all that. So, I'm going to share some Viking vitals. You may or may not remember that Northside High School is the only high school that has free lunch and breakfast opportunities for our students. So during the month of September, that's the amount of meals that we serve to our students. That's very impressive. Probably the most impressive stat, on an early dismissal, which the students love, our staff maybe not so much, we serve 700 lunches within 90 minutes. And they are back to back to back. So our students clean up after themselves because if they leave at 10:30, the next group comes in at 10:30. So you imagine serving that many meals. That's very impressive. 24-25 school year, we also enrolled more students than any other high school or any other school in the county. We enrolled 114 students during that school year. We go to staffing in February, not knowing what those 114 students are going to want to take. That's kudos to our registration team, our counseling department, and Dr. Rippey. Couple of years ago, Mr. Riley and Dr. Nicely came to me, and we talked about the need for our students to believe in themselves and push themselves. So we have had a focus on having more students register for AP in dual classes, and we've almost doubled that in two years. So, kudos to our students for that. For a fun fact, implementation of our club days for inclusive and traditional days. We just have good old fun twice a year for our inclusive. Our high school kids sign up for things like art, gaming, badminton, pickleball, book, book club, international club, prevention club, chess club, crocheting. High school kids still like to crochet. Coloring, volleyball, theater, outdoor, just to name a few. That's been something I think the students have enjoyed. The next one is, Mr. Williams said I could share that we are projected to be distinguished. So with that said, this group right here, this is what makes us special. It is our staff. The distinguished title carries a lot in terms of the accountability wording right now. We were on the bubble. The first round that came out, we were on track. Whatever they want to call us, we're just really special. And it's because of this group right here. So they're not with us tonight, but the staff at Northside, near and dear. I'm going to turn this over. Ms. Light is going to introduce and talk about a couple of slides. Ms. Light is our liaison with our staff in the PTSO, which is what we're going to highlight tonight, is our PTSO. We probably have one of the largest parent-teacher organizations, student organizations. When I came, we did not have anything. So in five or six years, I think Ms. Light will share with you where we were and where we are. So Ms. Light, would you like to share? All right. So first, I want to talk about our opportunity-ready presentation. So in the 24-25 school year, we at Northside had 181 out of 254 seniors do their presentations. That's 71% in our first year. So we were really excited to see their hard work and their dedication through their passion projects. Our students did everything from building homes for Habitat for Humanity, to helping to clean up our NHS community. They've collected food for our local food banks, made cards and ornaments for the Ronald McDonald House, toys for Tach, you name it, they've done it. Our students showcased their talent and their passion for caring for our community through this project, and it is wonderful to see all the great things that they're doing to make Roanoke a better place to live. Now, we'll move on to our PTSO. So, in the 23-24 school year, we had 260 PTSO members, 79 were students. The 24-25 year, we had 250 members, 65 were students. And then this year, we have 331 members, 169 of them are students. That's almost 100 members added over two years. This PTSO group makes huge impacts in our community. I have some special kids with me tonight. So normally, our PTSO does a senior representative, but this year, we actually had so many highly qualified kids that we created a senior advisory council for our seniors. So these kids who are standing around me, we want to recognize all the hard work that they've been doing. They come to our board meetings, and they work concessions, and they work spirit shop, but the most important thing they do is provide their insight into what students need and want at our school. So Kaylee O'Connor, Jalen Merchant, Kennedy Helm, John Apparicio, and Nyla Anderson. We just wanted to make sure that we recognized our whole council. I'm going to turn it over to Matt Harris, our president, to talk a little bit more about the PTSO.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing us to talk to you guys about how wonderful our PTSO is. The PTSO continues to make a major difference in the culture and spirit of our school community. We are proud to say that we donate over $20,000 each year to athletic teams and student clubs. Plus, we also do a one-large end-of-the-year gift that goes directly back to the school. This is from concession sales and membership dues as well as community donations. We also fully fund the after-prom celebration. That after-prom creates a safe and unforgettable night for our juniors and seniors. Throughout the year, we focus on building community spirit and appreciation through special treats and events, from fall festivals to holiday surprises, as well as back-to-school treats for students and teachers. We provide lunches from local favorites like Sal's and Patty's Catering, who also assists with our concession stands as well. We sponsor DJs and tailgates for big basketball and football games. PTSO is just not fundraising. We're fueling school pride, supporting our students and staff, and strengthening Northside community each year. At Northside, every dollar from our concession stand goes right back into our school, thanks to our amazing parents, students, and community volunteers who keep it running. These funds help us improve our campus and celebrate our students and staff all year long. In the past, in 2023, we added outdoor patio furniture for our students and staff to enjoy lunch outside. Just this past year, we installed a new LED backlit sign. It's at the front of the entrance of the school and the gym. It's a bright showcase of Viking pride. And another thing that we do each year is we fund the senior banners, as you see in the picture there. Those are all, we do those for every sport, and also the marching band. Those are displayed throughout different various fields and gyms. And then after that season's over, the senior is allowed to keep that banner of them. We host student tailgates for the members to enjoy and come together. We also offer volunteer hours for our students to get those hours through concession shifts, and again, provide meals and treats throughout the year. To talk about the PTSO-sponsored after-prom, I'll turn it over to the PTSO Vice President, Jenny Hungate.
Hey, thank you so much for acknowledging our effort this year here. We have had a great time with all of these kids. After-prom, last year, we had 344 students sign up for our after-prom, which is incredible. Almost every single one of them stayed the entire night, too. That effort is large in part due to our community, the partnerships that we have with YOVA SO. They awarded us with a $1,000 grant this year, which helped pay for our after-prom. The last two years, and again, this year, we'll be hosting after-prom at the Leap Launching Pad. The Kids have a fantastic time there. We do everything that we can to try and keep them there the entire night, just creating an atmosphere for them that they're going to have an unforgettable night. We include a silent disco the last couple of years, a live DJ, airbrush tattoos, blow-up games, photo booths. And through the support of our community, we were able to send every single junior and senior home with a gift at the end of the night. That's like an Amazon wishlist gift that they were able to take with them, and a t-shirt. So anything that we can do to try and entice them to stay that entire night. And the last couple of years, we've been really successful with that and hope to continue that on. Northside High School is definitely community-powered. The things that we're able to do are definitely in large part to those relationships that we have.
If I can just have 30 more seconds. I'd like to recognize two of our other board members in attendance, our Treasurer, Leah Strach, and our Volunteer Coordinator, Jill Giles. They are in attendance tonight. I'd also like to thank Ms. Green for her encouragement from the administration and her input. I would also like to especially thank our teacher liaison, Missy Light. I truly do not think that our PTSO would be as successful without her. Missy volunteers, not only do we get Missy, but we get her family, her husband, even her father and her son. They donate their time, as you saw in one of the pictures. And our council members were behind a desk essentially that her husband made for our homecoming parade. She's a driving force with our membership numbers the way they are. She's our voice inside the schools. She's our biggest cheerleader with the students and the faculty. So I do think that the PTSO is truly stronger and better because of Missy Light. So I thank you, Missy, for your help.
I'll close, and I just want to say, I tell my nice parents this, and this is one of the reasons I picked our PTSO tonight to be a showcase. If you think that when your child comes to high school, that's a time for you to sit back as a parent, you are sadly mistaken. We need you involved in the community, and the parents of Northside have certainly stepped up, and I think that's evident by everything that they have done for us and continue. So I appreciate and I thank you all.
And the screen don't go anywhere. I've seen firsthand the job you've done there at Northside, and it's been fantastic. The success we've had starts with your inspirational leadership there, but it also requires a lot of community involvement. So thank you to all the parents that you've been able to talk into getting involved, and the student involvement since you've come to Northside has been tremendous. So keep up the good work and appreciate everything you're doing.
I'll echo Mr. Linden's comments. It's nice when they come by the school and to see how the kids react when they see us coming down the hallway and just the cool relationships that you have with everybody. I know you're really making a difference there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.01, report by Student Advisory Council Representative, Mr. Bear Tyree.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Nicely, Dr. Saltis, and members of the board. The Student Advisory Council met on Wednesday, November 5th. Members, welcome to Emma Rotkamp from Glenver Middle School as the new eighth-grade representative. Dr. Saltis presented information on potential future policies under consideration by the division. Students were invited to share their thoughts and provide feedback to help inform planning. Council members engaged in discussion and asked questions on how new policies could promote safety, health, and student well-being. Student representatives shared updates from recent principal meetings at their schools. Some of the highlights include Glenver High School is making updates to their drug and safety education programs. At Cave Spring High School, students recently held their annual trunk-or-treat. They've also instituted a High Five Friday, where each Friday, an athletic team visits a local elementary school to welcome the students into the building. The Knights Aid just completed their Drive for Change campaign, which promotes safe driving, and the FCC LA Club sponsored Ink Don't Drink, a temporary tattoo activity promoting healthy choices. At Cave Spring Middle School, students held a holiday donation drive and a Christmas party to support fellow student Camden Thepsumong. At Hidden Valley Middle School, students participated in a glow social dance. William Bird High School held a graduation event honoring Camden Thepsumong. This was a meaningful community moment of unity and support. The council discussed establishing clear attendance and membership expectations for SSC participants. I made a motion to begin adding an attendance requirement as part of the bylaws. The proposal received unanimous support. We will look at drafting a policy to be considered for adoption in the months ahead. The proposal received unanimous support. We will look at drafting a policy to be considered for adoption in the months ahead. Finally, our next monthly meeting will be held on January seventh. The council will be welcoming guest speaker Jamie Estrada, the supervisor of nutrition for R C P S. Thank you for your continued support of student leadership and voice in Roanoke County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven point zero one, public hearing regarding proposed sale of parcel number zero eight six point one two dash zero two dash one eight dot zero zero dash zero 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 zero. A public hearing is now open regarding the proposed sale of school board parcel number zero eight six point one two dash zero two dash one eight point zero zero dash zero 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 zero. This property is located adjacent to Cave Spring Middle School. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on the proposed sale? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Item eight point zero one, hearing of citizens for agenda topics. We do not have any. Item nine, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see, item ti- ten point zero one, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven course registration guide, Mr. Mike Riley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Nicely. Tonight, the instructional department brings the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven course registration guide to the board's consideration. Um, it is an action item, so at the end, we'll ask uh that you you vote on this. Um, I do want to thank Dr. Soltes and Mr. Sir for presenting this at the work session. Several of us were out of town at a national middle school conference. Um, they presented it at the work session. I think there were some questions. Um, we went to work and there are a couple programmatic changes that we have made that we want to bring to your attention before we see if you guys have any questions for us. The first one, all of our seniors starting next year will be registered for their opportunity-ready um portfolio defense. Many of you have seen them do that. Our expectation this year, and we'll talk about it during our rec- our information later in the board meeting. But uh, we're hoping all our seniors this next year will present their defense. You saw Ms. Green talk about how excited they were, and several of you saw some of their students present last year. But next year, what we want to do is have all the seniors registered for a course. Um, it will be non-credit bearing, but the one change we did make is next year it will also not be graded. So it'll just be recognized that they completed it, but it won't receive a grade. We want to make sure that our teachers and students are ready before we add a grade component to that in the future. The other piece um is our Center for Visual Arts. As you know, it's going to be moving to Northside High School next year. Um, we uh asked uh Ms. Coverley uh to talk to Ms. Green and look and see if there's a way we could get that C V A one class face to face. They did locate a room that we feel like we can use. We had Mr. Cagles go over, take a look at that space. We feel like we can offer it there. It will need to be uh retrofitted for that class at a cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars. Um, and Mr. Cagles will be bringing that to the board for your consideration in terms of funding that. So that is one of the programmatic changes we've made is we're going to be able to offer C V A one at Northside High School. Um, during that school year, we'll have C V A one through four offered there in two different classrooms with the same staff and the same setup. All the other um parts of the registration guide are the same as they were presented. So at this time, we want to see if you have any questions.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to thank you for uh, you know, our arts program. We don't want anybody to think that we think any less of of our arts program because we're moving it uh physically, but I'm glad we're getting that class in person. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten point zero two, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five audit and year-end results, Ms. Susan Peterson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, tonight, we are presenting the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the A C F R. This is for your review and approval. The full report is available on Board Talks and it is on the finance website under the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five reports. We will, we have sent the electronic file to the print shop, and as soon as it is ready, um, we will send copies to you. Sorry, my computer glitched out. Um, so uh the audit process uh does require significant preparation across the division. So I do want to take time to thank our bookkeepers, our principals, our central office staff and leaders for all of their, and the finance staff uh for all of their efforts. The teams work very carefully each day to manage the fiscal operations, ensure proper use and accounting of funds, and support a smooth audit. Their work reflects strong stewardship of taxpayer funds and student resources. The Act for itself does provide a complete picture of our financial activity for the year and serves as the final step in each of our budget cycle years. While the entire document is informative, I do encourage you to review the management's discussion analysis that begins on page nineteen, as it offers a clear overview of this year's financial results and key trends. I'd like to extend my appreciation to the Brown Edwards team, specifically Mr. Chris Banta, the partner, Mr. Travis Gilmore, the manager, and Mr. Ethan Harless, the in charge in the back, um for their work throughout this process. Earlier today, the audit committee met with the auditors and re- received the results of the audit, and I'll let Mr. Gilmore take a few moments and share that with you.
Uh, well, good evening. My name is Travis Gilmer. I'm a director with Brown Edwards, uh here to do the presentation of our audit of the school board for two thousand twenty-five. Uh, results of the audit, as Susan mentioned, uh and related deliverables, we're uh discussing great detail in the audit committee meeting that we held earlier. Um, as always, you know, really want to thank Susan and her team for all they do to make sure uh this process goes as smooth as possible. Um, and just sort of a reminder about the the audit process, it starts in April. Uh, and obviously wraps up now. We spend hundreds of hours uh on the audit, and so it really requires a good working relationship. And so we're just very appreciative of the relationship that we have with the schools. Um, I just want to at a very high level kind of go over the two deliverables uh that you have. Uh, as Susan said, the first one is the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, there's really two phases to the audit. There's the financial statement audit opinion, and then there's a compliance audit opinion. Uh, and so I'm happy to report that both were clean, and we had no findings or issues that were noted uh during our audits. Um, the single audit opinion, which is normally presented with the uh the county report, uh will not be presented, uh at least at this time as O M B uh has yet to issue the final uh compliance supplement. And so a separate single audit opinion um on the federal funds will be issued at a later date uh once that's available. And just as reminders, uh the schools expended thirteen point nine million dollars of federal funds during the year. Uh, and we actually audited two federal uh programs this year, uh one being ARPA and the other being uh child nutrition. Uh, and so far, I'm happy to both uh report that both are clean. Uh, we have no findings or issues that have been noted during the single audit. Uh, and then the other uh communication that you have is the required communication with those charged with governance. Uh, this is a letter that communicates information such as the most sensitive estimates during the audit, uh posted and unposted adjustments, uh any difficulty that was had during the audit, any differences of opinions, and things along those lines. Um, happy to report that we have no journal entries this year, and the letter that we issued is very uh standard. And then lastly, attached to this letter is a copy of the signed management representation letter obtained at the end of the audit.
Thanks so much, Travis. Um, I do want to go ahead and switch gears real quick um and highlight our year-end surplus and carrier. So in your uh packets at your desk, you flip past the first floor report, you will see um the year-end surplus carrier report. Uh, this shows the final balances by fund, including the general fund carrier. We did review the general fund activities with you on September fourth, and since then, there have been several audit adjustments that my team had to record. Um, these audit adjustments included recognition of additional revenue of eleven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, additional expenditures of sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and a reduction of encumbrances by fifty seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. The net impact of these uh changes is to increase the capital, major capital allocation by four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and a similar matching increase for the minor capital allocation. So there were no reductions from what I shared with you. Uh, the amount going into the major minor capital will be slightly more. The second page in your packet presents the appropriation summarized by category to comply with the county's ordinance requirements. We will present this carrier request to the Board of Supervisors on December sixteenth for the first reading of the ordinance. And then the second and final reading will occur in January. I can answer any question, or Mr. Gilmore can answer any questions if you have any.
I'd like to say great job to you and your staff as always.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am.
Item ten point zero three, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five O P E B trust fund financial report, Ms. Susan Peterson.
Thank you. Tonight, I am presenting the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five financial report for the school's O P E B trust. The school division administers a retirement medical plan for employees who retire age fifty-five or older with at least ten years of service who have been enrolled in our health plan for at least twelve months. Retiree premiums use a blended rate that combines active and retiree claims, which lowers the cost for retirees. In two thousand twenty-five, the employee extended work plan provided up to three thousand dollars to each eligible employee's medical premium for up to five years. To manage long-term liabilities, the school board participates in the V M L V A C O O P E B pool trust with the county. This allows us to invest in assets specifically for retiree medical benefits. As of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, the school's trust balance was two point one million dollars. A local finance board meets quarterly to review contributions, fees, investment activity, and performance. Uh, the O P E B trust report is attached um as your last page of that packet, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Item ten point zero four, approval of sale of portion of Cave Spring Middle School property, Mr. Todd Cagles.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Nicely, Dr. Soltes. Uh, if you will recall, David Andrews with uh T C uh T S C G attended a previous work session and presented a proposal to purchase from the school board approximately point four acres of Long Ranch Crest Drive. That piece of proper property was formally divided into two parcels identified as tax I D number eighty-six dot one two dash two dash eleven and eighty-six dot one two dash two dash ten, uh as indicated on the survey map. Uh, Mr. Leinberger, could we get the other graphic? Just wanted to make sure that we've seen that map that uh is posted publicly. Uh, so it's those two uh parcels outlined in red. Those two parcels were subsequently uh rolled into the Cave Spring Middle School property, and they now do not exist separately. Those property lines were abandoned at some point in the past, and the property was made part of tax I D eighty-six point one two dash oh two dash eighteen dot zero zero dash zero zero zero, which encompasses the entire Cave Spring Middle School campus. The board did express a willingness to consider the sale pending an appraisal and a satisfactory offer. The board then authorized me to negotiate with the potential buyer to obtain a satisfactory agreement. Having reviewed the appraisal and having received an offer consistent with the appraised value, including the purchaser paying all costs associated with the sale and having held the required public hearing, it is my recommendation that the board take action to approve the sale of this property, pending a satisfactory survey and subdivision of the lot which matches the previously abandoned lot designations.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Quick, quick question on the information that you had. Proposed property lines, that that is not what they're interested in purchasing?
Uh, from?
From the Balzer survey?
No, sir. It's just those two lots as indicated on that map.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Item ten point zero five, approval of engineering study for William Bird Middle School softball field, Mr. Todd Cagles.
Uh, we were asked to present a proposal this evening to fund engineering and permitting work for a potential project for a softball field to be constructed on the grounds of William Bird Middle School. Based on previous experience with similar project, staff is recommending approval of twenty-five thousand dollars from minor capital special project projects to fund engineered plans for the forthcoming project.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten point zero six, American Education Week Resolution, Dr. Ken Nicely.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is always a uh a wonderful thing to be able to bring to you each year as we celebrate American Education Week this week. So we uh recommend that you adopt the following resolution or recognition. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they substitute teachers, custodians, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, or many other roles, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community catalysts, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise, now therefore be it resolved that the Roanoke County School Board does hereby recognize November seventeenth through twenty-first as the one hundred fourth annual observance of American Education Week, and each school will be receiving a donation uh for the principal to use for their faculty on behalf of the school board if you choose to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented by Dr. Nicely.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, not only do I I hope we approve that, which I'm sure we will, but would like to uh share that, you know, I think I've said it probably to the point that I got some blowback during this last campaign, but I think we have the best staff second to none in anywhere in the state of Virginia or or the United States. We have amazing people and and we appreciate each one of you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clemens?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Item eleven point zero one, opportunity-ready update, Ms. Kim Bradshaw and Mr. Mike Riley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We wanted to take just a little time tonight to give you guys an update on where we're at with our opportunity-ready work. You've heard us talk a lot about it. You've heard schools talk a lot about what they're doing. So we wanted to start with just a brief history to kind of catch everybody up to how we got here and then talk about some of the exciting things that are going to be happening this year. Of course, as you know, it's been about a decade now that we've been operating with our Roanoke County uh public schools profile of a graduate. Uh, about again, ten years ago, we got together with a large stakehold uh group of stakeholders from across the valley to come up with really the skills we knew students were going to need to be successful when they left high school, when they left our schools. And we came up with our opportunity-ready skills. We want them to be critical thinkers. We want them to be good citizens, collaborators, communicators. We want them to be centered and creative. So again, we developed those with community input and have been operating with those as kind of our central idea for what students need to be successful, to be opportunity. to be successful, to be opportunity-ready when they leave our division. Of course, we know that doesn't happen in a vacuum. We know there's a lot of pieces that go into that. When Ms. Green was up here talking about everything that makes Northside tick, you think of all the staff members, all the support staff, the teachers, the bus drivers that make that happen. We know that all those things need to happen for our students to be opportunity-ready. First, we know we need a balance. Uh we're super excited. Ms. Green was talking about the fact that Northside High School is going to be distinguished. Um and that goes back to not just the fact that their students have those opportunity-ready skills, but they're also deep learning, learning the content, they're successful in the end-of-the-state SOL tests. So we have a balance where we want to make sure our students have those skills, but also have deep content knowledge. And Roanoke County Schools has done a great job with that. We want to make sure there's a strong school and classroom climate where staff and students feel a sense of belonging. We want to make sure that our staff is growing professionally. We want to make sure that we have the best support tools and services in the valley to make sure that our students and staff can thrive. And then, of course, we want a strong learning culture in each of those buildings. What we did to really move this work forward, we had the prof- profile of a graduate, but honestly, if that's where you stop, it really just becomes aspirational. It's a poster, it's colorful, we talk about it, but it doesn't necessarily mean anything unless there's a way we can start to measure it. So we looked at, how do we go about measuring this? So in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, several years ago, we started with a group again of stakeholders to come up with developmentally appropriate, what we call performance outcomes. Their ICAN statements. And by developmentally appropriate, we actually have them broken out by elementary, middle and high school. Where their ICAN statements around three of our Cs, we chose collaboration, communication and critical thinking. Cause we felt like those were going to have the most impact in the classroom. Those were going to be very instructionally relevant and give our teachers really something to focus on. So we then took those ICAN statements and started having students develop portfolios of your work, curating some of their best work. And the following year, in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we started with phase one. It was the initial phase where we had one high school piloted senior defenses. Um we started that first year uh with a handful of students defending their portfolios. Several of you were able to see that that year. And then we had one middle school and three elementary schools that started with student-led conferences where they would take their work and they would either talk to their parents or at the senior level, they would defend to the panel and talk about how that was evidence that they had mastered those opportunity-ready skills. And of course, several of you have gotten to sit on some of those over the years and seen some of the really amazing work that our students do. The next year, in phase two, we expanded that to three high schools um that had senior defenses. Three middle schools and nine elementary schools that had student-led conferences. Then last year, in phase three, the final pilot phase, all five of our high schools had senior defenses. And of course, we were super excited to see the numbers that Ms. Green talked about where they had almost seventy per- over seventy percent of their students present in that first year. All five middle schools and all sixteen elementary schools had student-led conferences last year. So that kind of wrapped up the pilot phase. And really what we want to talk to you guys about this this uh evening is what we've got planned for this year. We're super excited that at the high school level, we're going to have senior defenses. And last year, when we approved the calendar, the school board approved two virtual days at the high school. Um ninth through eleventh grade will be at home. We'll make sure they have work. But we want to make sure that all staff are prepared and ready to score defenses. So that our goal is all of our seniors will have an opportunity to to defend a portfolio during those two days. High schools are working right now with their kids to make sure they're starting to prepare for that, make sure teachers are trained and are able to score those defenses. We're going to be working to make sure if there are transportation issues, we can get them there because we want to make sure that our seniors have a chance to defend their portfolio. And we really want to make this a celebration of learning and make sure that they have a chance to share with us the amazing things that they've learned and mastered. Um and one of the cool things about those defenses is we allow the seniors to really personalize those. They get to choose those artifacts. And again, if you've seen those, you know the pride those students put into those artifacts and the excitement that they have as they're able to share those things. At the middle school level, we're going to have student-led conferences on April twenty-second is the day we've designated for that. It's an early dismissal day that'll allow us to do some during school and some after-school student-led conferences. We wanted to make sure that all of our parents had an opportunity uh to participate in that. There are a few schools that will actually be doing some conferences outside those dates, just to make sure that we have opportunities for all our parents at the middle school level to come in and hear their students articulate how they've mastered those skills and look at the evidence that those students have provided. And of course, the elementary school is also going to be doing some things this year with the student-led conferences.
At the elementary school, we're continuing with full implementation, which means all of our elementary schools will be participating and this is for grades three through five. Um the elementary schools have given feedback that they are just amazed at how well the students are able to present the information to their parents. Uh one of the things that I think was a a big aha for everyone is that um the teachers felt like maybe maybe the students weren't going to be able to present, but the students all were able to shine. Cause you all know when they come home from elementary school and you say, how was your day? It's fine. And they're very, they don't go into detail, but boy, when they sat down with their parents, they really went into detail and explained all of their artifacts. So it was great. We're going to do um our conferences on February ninth, which is our parent-teacher conference day. So to this point, up to this point, we've had over fourteen hundred elementary students uh participate in student-led conferences and we've had over twelve hundred middle school students uh share their goals and growth with their parents. And so we just look for those numbers to grow even more this year since we are in full implementation. Um students at every level are building confidence and ownership and of course, having their own agency with their learning. Um opportunity-ready, we mentioned Northside High School, which we're very proud of of their seniors. Uh but over three hundred of our seniors this past uh May did earn the opportunity-ready seal on their diploma. And these students were recognized for having critical thinking skills, communication, collaboration. And they're not just graduating with their diploma, but with a seal that says they're ready for whatever that next step might be in their future. Um as you all know, we were recognized as one of twenty-four school districts uh with the Carnegie Foundation, looking to reimagine what high school will be for our students for the future. So we're very excited about that work and the opportunity-ready work um works very seamlessly with the Carnegie Institute. We're serving as a model of how intentional performance assessments and student-leading or student-led learning can transform readiness. And we did take a team to present at a national conference. Um and they had a great turnout with the session sharing how we look at opportunity-ready from the elementary all the way through our seniors and and preparing our graduates. We continue. This work is is not complete by any means. Um we are continuing to expand our student-led conferences so that all students have a uh opportunity to participate. We don't want, just like Mike was saying earlier, we don't want parents um the inability to maybe come to a parent conference to be the um the barrier between a child presenting and not presenting. So everybody's working on different ways that we can make sure all of our students get to participate. If it's virtual with their parents, or maybe it's with a staff member within their own school if they're not able to participate with their parents. We are continuing to expand deeper learning experiences in all of our class classrooms. That's K through twelve. That is a mission that everyone has as part of our strategic plan and part of our goals for each individual school. And we want to ensure that every student and every school and every classroom is truly opportunity-ready. They're ready for whatever their next step is. If you're at the elementary level, you are ready for middle school. If you're at middle school, you're ready for the high school experience. And when you graduate from Roanoke County, we know you're ready for whatever that next step might be. Military, workforce, college, whatever that next step is for for that individual. Together, our educators, our students, our parents and our community members are continuously redefining success. Cause we always want to know, what what does the workforce need? What what do our graduates need to be successful in all of the venues that they have um at at their will? We are proud of our progress and we're continued, we're committed to moving further. And uh we want to make sure that all of our students are opportunity-ready. We just wanted to end with our mission because our mission is what keeps us focused. For we are, we are, our mission is to prepare every student and every school and in every classroom to be opportunity-ready. So we appreciate you and do you have any questions for either Mike or myself?
Well, I do have have one question uh. Going back to, well, first off, I think Doctor Nicely, didn't you start the C-change? Well, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it took, but I think back to the earlier days on the board. I remember that 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 started with like three Cs, wasn't it? Okay, it's four. Okay, I thought we started with three and then went to four and five. But nonetheless, I the only thing, question I have is on the elementary level, I worry a little bit about our teachers in that respect. Do we, so we give two virtual days at the high school level. Do we need a a couple of days at the elementary level? And and the reason I say that is because of all the SOL testing and so forth that that goes, gets thrown in there. I love what we're doing, don't get me wrong. And I'm just wondering, you know, we already know that our elementary teachers, it's hard to find that space and time during the day for them to have some extra time to prepare or to just take a break really, uh to give them just a a few minutes. Um so I just wonder if coming down to the third grade level, which again, I love the idea. I don't, maybe it's not quite as intensive. And I got to see the high school in person, but I didn't get to see the elementary. I hope to get, see that this year. Um do we think we need a little bit of extra time built in for the elementary teachers?
It is certainly something that we can consider. I mean, we work very closely with our administrators and with our teams uh to determine what their needs are. At this time, the elementary, the way it, the format is set up, um it looks a little different. Uh you, in one classroom, you might have five students at the same time in different areas of the classroom presenting with their their families. So it does look a little different at the elementary level than it does, say, even at the middle school level, where the student is actually standing and presenting their information to their parents, which has a different feel. At the elementary level, it's a little bit more community-based and related. And you have multiple students presenting at the same time.
Well, and at the high school, well, that's phenomenal, the opportunity-ready and being able to present. I think it really prepares them for college in in a lot of ways. Uh you know, just being able to stand up in front of people, first step, let alone that then you're going to defend, you know, the criteria. But um so I I just worry a little bit about our elementary teachers in that respect, so. Um but I I love the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to commend Doctor Nicely for his vision with this program. I mean, it is, it's come such a long way in the three, four years um of of doing this and yet I remember when we started, I think it was just Hidden Valley High School, but to get it in in all these schools now and vision and and the teamwork that it took to put it together, just want to say thank you for what an outstanding uh outstanding program this has become.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Item twelve point zero one, hearing of citizens for non-agenda topics. We do not have any. Item thirteen point zero one, report by Roanoke County School Superintendent, Doctor Nicely.
We've had a longer meeting uh than normal this evening, so I'll try to keep my remarks a little briefer. Um I want to begin though by acknowledging the wide variety of recognitions we had this evening and how they symbolize the incredible number of programs we have in Roanoke County Public Schools. The incredible students, student athletes that we have, the incredible teachers, staff members that we have. And this includes uh Ms. Peterson, our chief financial officer. And I want to thank her and again congratulate her and her team for an excellent um audit report. It's it's truly something that we don't want to take for granted. Uh it's truly something that uh they continue to deliver uh each year and uh doesn't happen by accident. Uh speaking of um uh oh, I I'm sorry, also want to thank Ms. Green for her excellent leadership at Northside High School uh in their school spotlight, our presentation this evening. She truly and genuinely cares about each student and believes in their potential and success has been, has been noted. Um and then speaking of Northside, I want to congratulate our combined choirs from Northside High School and Northside Middle, who are the featured vocalists for the State Veterans Day Ceremony held last week in Richmond and attended by the governor. Uh we got to hear some video, a video clip of that, so I can say they sang beautifully. And they also drew high praise from those who organized uh the program. So I want to thank Ms. Ashley Galian, the choir director at Northside, for all the extra effort and time it took to make that possible for the students and the veterans uh that were honored. I also thank all of our schools who presented Veterans Day programs last week, by the way, either during the school day um or uh in the evening. I know the veterans uh they honored, appreciated it, and these programs are always a powerful uh way to instill a sense of civic responsibility and patriotism in our students. Um each month, including just last week, representatives from the PTAs and PTOs gather um together and meet to share ideas for programs and fundraisers. And so I was so pleased to see that was a huge uh port of emphasis in Northside School Spotlight this evening, very appropriate. All of these representatives, um these parents who and also in teachers in some cases, um they represent um a large number of parent volunteers who actively participate in helping our teachers and students in a wide variety of ways. And also want to take a moment to thank all of our parents and staff who put in tons of extra hours of volunteer time to make all these programs and events possible on behalf of these um parent organizations. This past Thursday, marketing students from all of our high schools converged on the Roanoke College campus to compete in the annual DECA competition. These marketing students made us proud in the way they represented Roanoke County Public Schools and their high schools and showed off their interviewing and marketing skills. So congratulations to them and the teachers once again who prepared them to compete. Um want to thank Ms. Clemens and Mister London for helping Doctor Soltis and me present at the, you you guys know you're doing this. We're going to present at the school board uh uh school association conference later this week. And we're going to proudly share with the other school districts, the innovative work we're um have done here in Roanoke County Schools on our opportunity-ready graduate program, about which you heard an update this evening from Mister Riley and Mister uh Ms. Bradshaw. And I want to thank them for their continued leadership in this uh in this effort. It is start with a vision many years ago that we um uh formed uh around our C-change framework, as well as our opportunity-ready graduate profile of a graduate, uh which really um uh rose from the input of teachers and principals and parents talking about what we wanted our schools and our classroom experiences look like for our kids. Um I did go to Mister Riley and Ms. Bradshaw, um uh probably about this time last year, maybe two years ago and said, uh we need to accelerate this in terms of our um opportunity-ready graduate program. And they have just been fired on all cylinders and can and as well as our principals and our s- uh teachers and staff to make that happen. So I just want to thank them again. Um our next community meeting about the dangers of smartphones and social media is going to be tomorrow evening at six o'clock. And that one's at K Spring High School. And all those meetings are open, of course, to anyone in the public. And the complete listing of those meetings is on the uh the the with the website. Finally, as you um acknowledged in your resolution, this is of course, American Education Week, which is a time each year to pause and celebrate the institution of public education and its ever-expanding role of educating children, not just on academics, but on skill, skill-building and developing the mindsets needed to get along with others and develop uh ways to solve problems. Public schools try very hard to be all things to all people, which is sometimes an impossible task. But there is no doubt that strong public schools are needed more than ever to bring people together and prepare graduates for future success. None of this is possible without educators and staff who show up every day and give a hundred percent uh and more. We take time to thank them and elevate the crucial and valuable work they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen point zero one, reports and inquiries of board members. Mister Greenway, we'll have you go first.
Uh yes, ma'am chair, thank you. Uh Mister Leinberger, do you have my picture? I don't, I don't, I don't know if anybody knows this guy, but uh my company, we sponsor the uh dogs games. And this guy came out and led the the choir for the uh, look, yeah, there you go. This guy came out, I don't think anybody knows him, but led the choir for the National Anthem on this particular night. And uh I got the chance to say hello and they did an awesome job. It's uh, it was Veterans Day, I believe, wasn't it? Was it the Friday night? Yep. So uh but you know, you did a great job. It was so cool to see you out there and I've I've seen you last year too, but uh this time I took a picture. I said, I'm going to capture this moment and and send it to you. Um so thank you for your service and and for all the gentlemen there. Um and I think there were some ladies in there as well. Um so uh real quick, I just want to uh move to uh, we just went through an election. So, uh, real quick, I just want to, uh, move to, uh, we just went through an election time. We had a, uh, we had a, it's very engaging, very, uh, fulfilling. If the outcome's the right way, obviously, but I want to thank the, uh, Vinton District voters. You know, it's, it's humbling and it's, uh, it's very rewarding too, to, uh, really didn't do a lot of campaigning during the season. Went to the polls early, went, uh, and, and worked, uh, voting day, did a little online stuff. But, uh, you know, I felt like, uh, my record hopefully, uh, would speak for itself and, and I think it did. You know, I had a lot of things working against me, had a lot of people working against me. I had, uh, my own Board of Supervisor representative worked all day from six in the morning till seven at night handing out my opponent's, uh, info. I had the election mistake that I made on the forum, you know, so they, they certainly publicized that. Thank you, uh, media for, for all you did for that. Appreciate that. And then, uh, you know, just, uh, then I had some of the other group that, uh, comes to see me quite often, uh, or see us in the, the boardroom. But, uh, you know, I, at the end of the day, it was a, what I consider an overwhelming victory. And I'm, I'm really appreciative to the Vinton District voters. I thank you for, uh, you know, for your show of support. And for that, I'm going to double down and work twice as hard for, uh, Roanoke County Schools and for the Vinton District. Um, yes, the Vinton District, I'm going to also continue to, to support and push and work as hard as I can to make sure our school systems, facilities and, and such are on par with the rest of the county. And I want to make sure that, uh, Roanoke County School System stays at the top of the, the state of Virginia. Again, I say this, I said it many times and, and I, you know, we're, we're essentially judged on the scores, uh, of our students, um, you know, from around the state. We're kind of lumped in with, with that group. And we were sixth in reading, I'm sorry, sixth in math, seventh in reading, uh, out of a hundred and thirty-one districts in the state of Virginia. And I have said this for about three or four months now. I think that's something we need to figure out how we need to, uh, promote that, uh, show that to everyone. Uh, I try to say it everywhere I go. And, uh, it doesn't happen, uh, by accident. Doctors, Dr. Nicely and staff, absolutely amazing. It, uh, you know, you've heard some of it here tonight, the opportunity-ready and, and some of the, uh, our, our seniors, uh, you know, defending their, their, uh, projects and, and coming out of schools that, uh, I don't know that that's been done, uh, you know, ever before, uh, maybe. But, uh, you don't hear of that very often in, in the high schools and, and even down to our third grade, you know, we heard. So, uh, thank you to the staff. Thank you, everyone that, uh, that participates with our schools. And thank you for having me back. I want to also say that, uh, this is one of the things I'd like to do over the next year is I'd like to put memorials at each of our schools if we can. I don't know what that means. I don't know if that's like a, a dogwood tree and a plaque, you know, that's a dedicated space to recognize our teachers and for everything they mean to our community. It's a small thing. I realize it's not a, uh, not, you know, putting more money in their pockets. I, I realize it's not patting them on the back, but hopefully if they ride up to our schools at each school, especially in the Vinton District, I'm going to make that happen whether we, you know, agree on the whole district. I think everybody would agree with that. But I'd love to do it at least, you know, at our schools and, and get somebody to help sponsor that, whether it's a company or Lions Club that I'm a part of, or the Vinton Moose Lodge, or somebody, uh, that would participate with us to make those memorials available for our teachers, that at least they draw, and drive up to each school and say, you know, we are supported, we're appreciated. And, uh, I think through this last couple of months, I, I think our folks know they're supported and I think they know they're appreciated. And, and I just want to double down on that and give them a space to, to say that. And then last, I, I just want to reiterate that, you know, I brought this up a few, yeah, probably up to a year ago about the actual revenue versus eight, versus the estimated revenue that the schools get from our counterparts at the Board of Supervisors. We are supposed to get, uh, the percentage of actual revenue as far as I can tell, unless somebody can show me something different. And maybe, uh, you'll do that. But until you can do that, um, we've been shorted the last, probably the last decade, maybe not with COVID withstanding, that we're not getting part of the revenue that the schools deserve. And so I'd like to see if we're not going to give that to the schools. I think that money ought to be used to pay down our debt, our debt service. And, uh, you know, that money should not be used to, to just go back into the general coffers and, and spent in some other way. I think, uh, you know, as a, in a conservative approach, we would use that, that revenue that's portion of that, that's an increase from property taxes, we would use that to pay down our debt service. And to, uh, again, double down from their point of view, um, on our school system and, and how proud we are of our school system. I'm, I'm happy to have played a small part, but I have no, uh, no foggy notion that it comes from Dr. Nicely and the staff. Uh, if it weren't for you all, uh, you know, that this place could be a, a whole different animal. And so we appreciate everything y'all do. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. London?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I probably should have done this when we went over the, uh, Brown and Edwards presented on the audit, um, tonight, but, uh, having sat on the audit committee for the last few years, I just want to thank, uh, Susan and, and your entire staff. You guys do such an incredible job. And when Brown and Edwards come in, I mean, it's, they can't find anything that you guys do wrong, it seems. So it's, uh, just so refreshing and, um, and nice to know that, that you guys are doing such a good job with all the funds, because they are public tax dollars and, um, and you guys just do an incredible job. So want to say thank you for that. Looking forward to the VSB A conference this week, um, over there in Williamsburg. It's always a, a, a fun event and, uh, looking forward to presenting and showcasing our opportunity-ready program. So with that too, and also like to piggyback on Tim's comment. I want to thank the voters in the Hollins District for allowing me to continue to serve for another four years as a temporary steward, as, uh, Dr. Nicely mentioned last meeting, uh, for not only Hollins District, but the, all of, all of Roanoke County. So I appreciate their confidence in me and, and the decisions that this board has made over the, the past eight years. And, um, just want to say thank you there. So also would like to just acknowledge my opponent. She is, uh, she was very passionate. She's intelligent. She is obviously a fantastic mother. Got to spend a lot of time with her, uh, not only over at early voting, but also on, uh, on Election Day. And, um, she, her, she, she was very passionate and her heart is in the right place. And, and she's going to do some wonderful things in this community, I'm, I'm certain. So Sullivan, uh, I got to spend a lot of time with Sullivan over there too. He, uh, I joked with him that, that someday he may decide to be on the school board, but I know he's probably has bigger and better political plans than, uh, than this position. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to congratulate our soccer team at Glenver High School again, uh, three-time state champions. I mean, that's just amazing. We listened to Coach Jones talk about all those stats and that's just unreal. Uh, it's a testament to our community and our staff and our coaches. And like I said, Coach Jones is a wonderful individual. He's so active in our community, coaches every sport. I mean, year-round, he's there. He's either coaching or helping take care of the fields. And, um, also I know we'll probably in the near future have our girls cheerleading and our boys cross-country state championships, uh, just here in the last week or two. So we'll see some more green come through here. Very excited. It looks like we win state title after state title. I'm just kind of wondering when the rest of you guys are going to show up, but. Just kidding. No, I'm just kidding. But, um, and I'd also like to recognize Deputy Mullins, uh, you know, the YOVO SO, SRO of the year. I took part in SRO, as an SRO took part in YOVO SO, uh, for many years. It's a great organization. They do a lot of good things. You know, they, they try to teach the dangers of driving intoxicated and drug use and things like that and wearing your seat belts. They do a lot of good things. And Deputy Mullins is just stellar.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
And the community, like Sheriff Farnes, I think like you had mentioned that, uh, they had cried out, please don't take him away. So, you know, so glad we were able to keep him there. He's a great, great asset to the school and the kids in the community. And I think he coaches over there too, right? Coaches football.
He helps with everything. Yes, he does.
Great. Um, again, recognize Tina Coffey and Tessa Ergo for their staff awards. I mean, and to echo, uh, Mr. Greenway's comments, I too believe that we have the best staff in this valley. I know some of them personally, know some of them professionally, and they are just amazing people, um, that truly, truly care about the kids. I see it every day, um, and, you know, talking about Jill Green earlier, like Dr. Nicely said, she truly cares about the kids. And not only can you see it in her actions, but when I walk down the hallway with her at times, the kids are happy to see her and they come up and they high-five her and they want to talk to her. And, and that's just a testament of the job she's doing there. And great numbers, obviously, that she mentioned. And, um, wonderful parent organization. So it's exciting to see her out tonight. And, uh, Tim, David, I'm glad you guys are back and, uh, look forward to at least two more years with you before I have to run again. So I know we'll accomplish some great things in the next two years. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Soltis and I participated in an interview as part of the Virginia Department of Education's evaluation of the Roanoke Valley Governor's School. The Director, Mr. Levy, and all of his staff at the Governor's School do a wonderful job. Um, and I think I can speak on behalf of Dr. Soltis that we were happy to be a part of the interview process and provide, uh, positive feedback on the impact that the Governor's School makes on not only our students, but across our entire area. Last week I had the privilege to be a part of the Veterans Day Celebration at Green Valley Elementary School. They put on a wonderful program every year. Um, they had several brave students read poems and all grade levels participated in the musical selections. The veteran speaker, Army Staff Sergeant Matthew Brooks, was introduced by his wife, Rebecca, who is a teacher at Green Valley, and his daughter Sandy, who is a, I think a second grader at Green Valley. So thank you to him and his family for being part of the celebration and thank you, of course, to all of the veterans for their service. As Mr. London and Dr. Nicely mentioned, we are going to the, uh, VSB A conference this week. And I do look forward to being able to talk about the opportunity graduate program and share that with other school districts from Virginia. So we look forward to that. Also want to say congratulations to the K Spring Cheerleaders for winning their third state championship. So we, they will be recognized here and so take that, Mr. Hudson. So I'm sure we'll have them here to, to recognize them, but a third time is a pretty big accomplishment. So, so look forward to that. And if there is nothing else, I just want to say, um, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And we hope that you enjoy that time with your family and meeting adjourned.